I would like to call to order a special meeting in Larkspur, Larkspur City Council. For Tuesday, October thirteenth, now a little bit after twelve. And if I could have a call to order from our city clerk.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Councilmember Homer.
Yeah.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Here.
And Mary Way is absent.
Okay, well, that's great. So let's get started and see if there is anyone from the public who would like to address members. Or address members of the city council, council on items that are not on the agenda. Or listed as part of the consent counter. Is anybody in the audience who wishes to speak?
And our members of the public, if you'd use the raise hand icon or dial star nine to let us know you'd like to give public comment. And I'll see that there is nobody currently wishing to do that.
Okay, in that, in that case. Let's move on to our principal item of business, business item number three point one, request to association of Bay Area governments. To use Plan Bay Area twenty fifty household growth as a baseline for regional housing needs assessment methodology. Can we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. Dan Schwartz, city manager, and I'll be joined by your planning and building director, Neil Talk. The. Association of Berry Governments A BAG, which is now part of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, M T C. Has been going through the preliminary process to reach the point where it will. Determine the Rena numbers for the city, the regional housing needs assessment numbers. The process is known as the Plan Bay Area process. And as part of it, the. A BAG formed a committee that had representatives from all of the counties and some other stakeholders to work on a methodology. For the Rena process. The methodology committee. Went through a lengthy exercise, looked at a number of alternatives and has recommended one to the executive board for adoption. And that is taking place on Thursday. And so there's been a bit of a scramble from agencies across the Bay Area to get comment letters into the executive board. And unfortunately, by the time your staff can sort of digest the material and understand what's going on, we couldn't prepare it for your agenda item. As an agenda item for one of your regular meetings, so he called this special meeting to give you an opportunity to weigh in on whether you would like to. Comment on the methodology and its impacts. You'll see that in the packet, we've provided you with some of the background materials so you can understand. How these numbers are being generated and how they're being distributed throughout the entire Bay Area. And you'll also see that Larkspur is receiving a fairly significant allocation of housing needs to plan for. Which, of course, will be really challenging for us. No matter what number they assign us, it's always been challenging for us being a fairly built out community. But these numbers are rather high, based on our past experience in the Rena process. Additionally, the Rena process doesn't really look at some of the other policy issues that have come to light in terms of development over the last several years. Notice notably the threat of wildfire and also floodplain designations and also. Shorelines and sea level rise. And those are three areas that your staff feel the methodology is lacking and given those are all present in Larkspur. We have a lot of concern about that. And. We're here to answer any questions you have about the process. We've proposed a draft letter. We've given you the material that, that the staff from A BAG put out as well as material from your. M C C M C representative to A BAG, which is Pat Eklund of the Nevada City Council. Neil's counterpart in San and Salmo was the staff representative in the housing methodology process. And so he's had a number of briefings among the planning directors. So Neil, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I, I think that's a good summary. I think I'd be. Just want to be prepared to answer questions from the city council. Again, this was a. We have been in touch, Elise Simonian, who's the planning director over in San and Salmo has been on the committee and has been informing us. Sort of as it's been phasing along of the progress. But the, the final. Methodology that was settled on. Did come somewhat of a surprise to the degree that it leaned. Not just highly on the city of Larkspur, excuse me, not just. Highly on the county of Marin, but also to the degree that within that Larkspur. Is kind of at the center of the methodologies. Focus. So one of those types of communities. So it's a. And again, we could go into, I think answering any questions you have might be helpful.
So with that, we turn it over to the council for questions and discussion.
Just had unmute, sorry about that. So are there any questions from members of the council on the staff report? I think I.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Councilmember Paulson. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I guess.
Unmute. Member Homer needs to unmute. Go, there you go.
I just want to go back to the question I asked earlier is, could you put this in the context of. How it may have been impacted by Larkspur. Being considered as containing high resource.
Well, I think there's two, two, two factors that impact Larkspur sort of in a combining fashion. One is. The high opportunity area, which is a basis of the Rena methodology, which. Because of our location near transit sources. Under recent legislation, there was a direction to create, have H C D identify. High opportunity areas as locations. For communities that may not have a P D A but have what they consider to be high opportunity for. Providing housing or maintaining housing sources near transit centers and jobs. Or within transit to jobs. And then the second factor is the high resource area. Which the two terms are used a little interchangeably, but they do have different. Purposes. The high resource area is a, is an approach. It's a, it's, it's an equity analysis that was done by. A BAG and M T C. And I could show you a, a map of the Bay Area which identifies. High resource areas that have been identified by A BAG. And the, the purpose of the high resource areas is to identify those. Areas within those communities that have. High levels of. Services. Schools and education, infrastructure, the things needed for keeping jurisdictions. Percentage of households that are really above. You know, not, not above poverty levels at certain income levels. So these are seen as. Areas that have potential to bring in more housing and the resources to bring in more housing. To provide more equity throughout the community. So I, I have a map. If you want to do a share screen, I could show that to you. But that's, that's one of the factors that then is added in after the baseline. To then identify another weighting towards the overall Rena number. And, and so again, Marin has.
And how, how those two.
Yeah, Marin itself has a lot of high resource area. So I don't know, Dan, if you, if you want to do a quick share screen.
Uh, well.
Allison.
You don't have that option there, Neil?
I don't have it right here.
Neil, I think you'll see at the bottom of the screen, yeah.
Yeah, there it is.
I'm so sorry. Try to zoom in. But the. It's, it's largely, these are areas that. Include indicators related to poverty, education, employment, job proximity. Home value. And. Low pollution levels. So it's sort of a number of factors that identify that these are communities that have. A lot of resources to potentially afford more housing or. Sort of viewing it from an equity perspective. And as you can see. The darker shades are those with very high. Considered to be having high resource value. And I'll zoom in a little bit. So you can see Marin is certainly that. And then. A lot of the, a lot of the suburban communities, more affluent suburban communities. Fall within the high resource value as you go to more further rural, far rural areas. And urban areas, then the resource value or their high resource area weighting begins to drop somewhat.
Neil, may I ask a question?
Sure.
But not, but not, but, but not significantly. If you look at, if you look at West Marin, that's, that's still considered to be. Relatively higher resource area. That's all farmland.
Yeah, and I think, and I'm not sure exactly how that's weighted, except it may have to do with sort of property value or income. There's a, there's economics that are weighed in to that consideration.
Okay. I'm sorry, councilmember Homer, you had a follow up, I think.
I just wanted to know in the vicinity of. One oh one, Sir Francis Drake intersection, if there was a significant overlap between the opportunity areas. That are identified and the high resource area designation.
Yes, the, the area around the transit station is considered a high opportunity area. And then that over overlays with. Our high resource area in Larkspur.
And just a. One quick follow up is in your observation of Marin. Is, does there seem to be a correlation with the places? More specifically, that have been identified. In jurisdictions as priority development areas with a concentration of. Resources and opportunity identification areas.
Well, currently, the one P D A, one P D A that remains is in San Rafael, in downtown San Rafael. So that is in. West of, west of one oh one is seen as high resource area. So that is consistent with the P D A. East of one oh one is a bit lower on the resource area. And then the county has had P D As. And sporadic locations up and down the one oh one corridor. And again, a lot of, a lot of Marin County, particularly Central Marin and Southern Marin is considered. High resource area.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paulson, I think you had a question you wanted to ask.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, so Neil, a couple of things, I, I just wanted to make sure I understand the issues. So the two methodologies at stake, I think, are household growth and fire hazard areas is correct.
Pardon me, I'd say that again.
Yeah, the two methodologies that they're considering for the, you know, twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one Rena cycle. Those two methodologies are the household growth methodology and the fire hazard area methodology. Is that correct?
Well, the methodology that's being, the methodology that's being proposed relies on a baseline that is. A baseline that's based on the current distribution of households throughout the county, throughout the. Throughout the region. And simply applying an increase, a growth increase based on that current distribution. In order to meet the. Forty-four thousand number that. A C D projects for the Bay Area. So rather than distributing it through a, the planned area, household growth. Projection, which is to have the grow, have the households. Increase in areas near jobs and near the transit, but also near the job centers. It's simply applying a blanket increase proportionally by households. Existing, which is, which was kind of the prior method of. The Rena and A BAG going back many years before Plan Bay Area. The purpose of Plan Bay Area was to begin to connect the jobs and the housing together to reduce transit and G H G. Okay, so. So they're using a, they're using a baseline that's based more on. Upfront. Upfront growth, applying a lot of the growth upfront immediately and spreading that proportionally based on current housing.
Okay, yeah, let, let me split the question. I think I have two questions. So just focusing on what you were talking about, household growth. So um, two, two questions follow for me. One is, can you explain a little bit, you know, when I look at the proposed, you know, Rena increased numbers for the cycle? It seems to me that our increase ratio is disproportionately high. So Larkspur is ten, you know, one thousand twenty. Increase of houses with a population of about twelve fifty. And, and you know, if you look at either San Rafael or Nevada, they have roughly double the requirement and they have four times the population. So I, I believe this may be tied into what you're saying about the high resource areas or about the existing households, but can, can you explain that formula a little bit?
Well, yeah, actually you hit right on it is the. San Rafael and Nevada, while they have some high resource areas, they do not have the, the. Proportionally, they do not have nearly the level of high resource areas that we have within our boundary. So proportionally, we're, we have a very high level of H R As. And our high opportunity zones where those communities have. A much more balanced mix of high resource versus lower resource areas as well as the county.
Okay, and so in our letter, I think what we're asking for as a mitigation is instead of looking at both. Existing households and household growth, we're saying exclude existing households, but we're not really addressing whether we're a high resource area or not.
No, I think the, the approach that's the consensus is that, that's, that's really one level of it, but it also, that's, I believe what. A, a pretty significant factor is the difference between doing for Marin as a whole. Is doing the application of. Just spreading the household growth throughout the region versus we're spreading, basing the baseline on household versus.
Neil, if I could jump in, I, I think Councilmember Paulson, it's generally. At this point, accepted policy that high resource areas are going to be part of the methodology. And I don't think you're going to find jurisdictions pushing back on that. That because. Over the last several years, focus on high resource areas has been a very strong. Part of all the discussions that have occurred. I think that's why you're seeing a lot of the material. Out there and particularly what we gave you discussing that how they're using households and criticizing the absence of a jobs factor in the. In the methodology.
So, so our letter doesn't address that, which I, I wasn't questioning, but I think we are saying we'd like to exclude existing households and just focus on growth.
I think the growth model that particularly the Contra Costa letters advocating at least. Seems to reconcile better to longstanding policy and practices than the new methodology does.
Okay, thank you. I have more questions, but we can move on if someone else wants to ask.
No, you, you have, you have the floor. Councilmember Paulson, go ahead.
Great. And, and the other question, so Neil, I'd mentioned two halves, you know, so that, you know, I tried to understand the formula, you know, we've talked about kind of three pieces, the. You know, high resource area means, look, you need to build more homes. You're near, you're near a transport harbor, you have jobs. The second is, you know, we're going to look at your existing households and growth to create a pro rata for that. The third is, is the actual fire safety. And my understanding is that, you know, the, the CAL FIRE maps are not up to date and they haven't been incorporated into Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. Is, is that, is that something that's getting any traction? Or how does that weigh into the total formula?
Well, that is, that is getting some, I, I think there's getting.
I think, Neil, I, I think Councilmember Paulson just asked the twenty-four thousand dollar question. No one knows on. What the discussion on Thursday around this issue is going to be. What's problematic is the use of CAL FIRE maps rather than more recently created. Wildland Urban Interface Maps, the HUI maps is, is a problem of great concern throughout the Bay Area. But, but we don't know the answer to your question. We don't know whether. The executive board will weigh that as a reason to press pause and revisit the, that particular question.
Thank you. And I guess I'd just like to suggest then, you know, read over the letter. It did, you know, summarize, you know, the. You know, most of the arguments and what Pat has been working on. I, I would. Urge a stronger case be made for the CAL FIRE maps. I mean, sitting on the M W P A and working with all the N R Gs, I, I really. I think that you could even bring in the fact that some of these places are uninsurable. You know, you're going to try to build in an area where the insurance either doesn't exist or is unaffordable. I think a, a stronger case could be made for that. Cause I, I, that really stood out to me and it's there at the last paragraph, but may well be higher up.
Anything else, Councilmember Paulson? Okay, any other council members want to? Add to the discussion here? I'll just kind of chime in. I thought Councilmember Paulson's comments are very well taken and. If there's a little additional looking at the letter to incorporate some of those concerns before it has to get fired off, that would be. That'd be good. I, I guess the one question that I had. Is the exclusion of a baseline that includes jobs. So in the second paragraph, we have a sentence in there that says, well, the city would prefer a baseline that includes jobs. We support the household growth base, baseline in there, explains the reasons for why, why that is the case. Is there an opportunity to recommend looking at a baseline that in fact does include jobs because that. When we just look at whole household growth, that kind of creates a false impression about what. What the needs and opportunities are within our local community. So I wish I could get some comment on that.
It's my impression, Vice Mayor Harof, that. The Housing Methodology Committee really took that off the table. At this point, because they've only put the one option before the executive board.
Yeah.
You're really only in a position to sort of say. If you're gonna pass something and they're under pressure now deadline wise to get something in place.
I understand.
Well, I think you could put more emphasis on jobs that my impression is you, that that's probably not going to happen. For better or for worse. It's certainly, I think, in the Contra Costa letter spelled out how the SKU. Is sort of stunning when you look at the, you know, ten major job generators in the Bay Area or in the county that's getting the greatest relief by the current.
Yeah, exactly. And, and the, the, the counties and the communities that are not. The focus of job growth or, or. Getting the burden of what's being imposed in terms of. Of Marina numbers. And that just seems wrong to me. So, you know, I, I don't know if there's much we can do about it. I, I like the letter overall, given the constraints that. We're facing with the, with the processes going, but it just seems like we're making concessions. In, in this letter that. Will not serve us well in the long term.
Well, I don't want to discount the work of your representative to this committee, Pat Eklund from Nevada. I think she was. One of the people early on saying the absence of weight on jobs is a problem. I think it's just we're, we're coming together to weigh in at the, at the tail end of the process.
Yeah. Sure. And I, and I, and I, and I appreciate that. I'm just kind of thinking about, you know, creating, creating a record. Going forward. And if there's a way to maybe just add a little stronger language in that sense. You know, recognizing that we're kind of where we are in terms of the, you know, our, our. Different communities we have to deal with here. But I, 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 I think it's a mistake not to include, not to have a baseline that includes jobs. And I think it will suffer the, the consequences of that in the long term. So if there's any way we can kind of beef up that language a little bit, that, I think that would be good, recognizing it may not go anywhere. Any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Paulson?
Yeah, um, for the city manager, Dan, I was wondering, do you think by including the, the point that, that Vice Mayor Harof is talking about, we weaken our letter? You know, because it's, it's sort of going to a beating force or, 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 you know.
That whole paragraph is pretty much the same paragraph that all the Marin cities are using. It's, it, I didn't actually draft most of that paragraph. I drafted the last paragraph to give more context to the commentary.
I appreciate that. I think, you know, bringing in the hazard zones is unique. You know, I don't think Nevada faces that or San Rafael faces it to the extent we do.
I think that was brought home. The managers participated in a countywide discussion and I think you heard. The Ross Valley managers all saying, we need to make this point that. We'd be forced to intensify use in these, in these areas that face all these problems.
Yeah, a couple more questions. Neil, if I may, um, do we have a current Rena target for the twenty-three thirty-one cycle? You know, they, they're telling us ten twenty is what this may lead to, but you know, in today's legislation and you know, what we've been given, what would, what is that number?
Well, that, that is, that's actually what they're creating.
Okay.
Through the legislation that's been adopted and the, and the various housing packages that have, have addressed. This particular topic and in fact, like the, the terms high re, high opportunity areas and what's now being termed high resource areas. Are well created through tailoring legislation, tailored legislation to attack. attack the housing crisis issue and is then driving sort of this new approach to to the housing methodology. And I think the, the concern, you know, what we're seeing is it is being, it's a bit weighted towards moving, getting the housing forward now as opposed to Plan Bay Area. The projections go out to 2050, but we're kind of seeing this being, feels like it's front loaded. And, and there is more emphasis on equity and resource or, and, and opportunity versus necessarily the focus on jobs. And sort of creating that jobs, housing balance and the concern concern we've seen as planners is the, the goal of Plan Bay Area is to marry the jobs and the housing and really try to reduce vehicle travel and, and transit congestion. And, and that's the overarching goal, but now the housing crisis is kind of creating that tension goal. Attention with that. So that's part of the emphasis in the, the recommended approach. Is trying to create a little more balance towards the jobs, housing.
And Neil, what was the, the last eight year cycle? What was the target number?
The last one was 100, was 132.
Yeah.
And now there was in 2008, there was a pretty high, there was a high jump in the, the prior cycle, the 380, 362, I think something. Something up in the 300s, which at the time was a pretty significant increase. And the, this of course represents a much higher jump and all, all, all communities throughout the Bay Area are, you know, are gras, wrestling with this, you know, this anticipated increase. And there's, it's, it will, it will be a challenge. Particularly when you factor in the numbers that are shown as very affordability levels too. This isn't just build the housing, but it's also pretty significant affordability levels. Which present all sorts of challenges.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councilmember Helmer?
Not really direct, directly related to the letter, but maybe kind of an elephant in the in the room. How, how do you see this connected to, and this is a question for Dan and or Neil? How do you see this connected to our needs in the future related to transportation funding?
I think there's two, I think there's two things that are on the horizon now for Larkspur. I mean, I think one is we may need to have, we may need to revisit whether we want to be a priority development area in Larkspur Landing. I know that's been a delicate subject, but essentially these methodologies tell me A-BAG intends to impose plans on us that assume we are one, whether we are or are not. And I think that's probably part of their strategy in working with MTC is to sort of force this discussion upon areas like Larkspur Landing. So I think it's a topic we'll have to revisit. The second thing I think is that once the methodology is adopted and we can see the full ramifications, I think Larkspur needs to engage MTC about how these numbers aren't realistic until we relieve the traffic on Sir Francis Street. And so to do that, MTC has to get very serious about the connector between 101 and 580. The study's going on now, so the opportunity is there. But I think that these numbers bring that discussion to the fore and put a lot of pressure on everybody to, to come up with a solution.
Does a quick follow up, I, my I sit on a subcommittee of the Transportation Authority in Marin focusing on that connector. And our committee meetings keep getting called off and delayed and pushed out and further into the future. Do you think that the timing of those meetings is seen in relationship to the process we're discussing today?
That's not the impression that I think I've gotten or Public Works Director Julian Skinner's gotten. Cause we're both on committees looking at that too. I think that the complexity of what they're looking at, the number of stakeholder interests. The impact that the solutions have on the different communities have all brought a number of things forward that require analysis. I think it's much more the challenge of the process than it is anything else.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Only one last comment.
Sure.
I, I understand and echo Dan Schwartz's comments related to our potential need to revisit the PDA designation around the Larkspur Landing area.
I guess I'd frame it in one way to frame it is they're, they're going to impose the negative things about a PDA on us. That's, that's what this signals to me. They're going to give you the bad part. So you might as well at least talk to them about getting the good part.
And if, if I could, and maybe just, just for a moment to educate the new council members. The arenas is significant because it's a housing, it's a target goal for the next eight year cycle that will begin in 2023. And we have to begin preparing our housing element. So we're in the, we're in the process, we're going to be bringing to you the general plan update, which does not include significant changes to land use densities or housing at this time. Because we've performed fairly well through this housing cycle, we're still short a number of affordable units, but we've outperformed the overall housing goal. And we're starting to catch up a bit on affordable units through second units, and that's beginning to ramp up for our current cycle. But the next cycle, whether or not it's this number or it changes to the other methodology, which would still be put us in around 800 units. That's a pretty big number for Larkspur. But the other challenge with the housing element to understand is it's required by state law to have a certified housing element that meets a lot of various tests of the housing and community development department goals, the legislation and their standards. And in doing that, it was adequate to be zoned, to zone for the possibility to basically accommodate development to meet your housing needs and to identify the areas that if developed and within the zoning constraints and so on, you can meet your housing needs. The new legislation is, is going to be a lot more critical on the housing element. It's going to look at it much. The Department of Housing and Community Development is going to look at it much more as not just a document that accommodates, but actually is going to preform. We may have to do pro formas for sites to really identify how they not just could be developed to meet the housing, but likely will be developed. And that's, that's the interesting new approach that the state is taking towards housing element law. And our eventual zoning, general plan designations and zoning categories. I think I see.
Scott, Cando, Councilmember Cando, go ahead.
A, a, a little divergent, I guess, from, from the topic, but just out of curiosity. If this ends up in a form that is either impossible for us to do, comes up with a number that we just can't realistically do in a, in a safe way. Or, or maybe we just decide, you know what, it's going to really have a detrimental effect on, on, on Larkspur. And we're going to choose not to do it. What are the penalties and, and how does that play out if, if something comes out that, that we just don't comply with?
I think initially what will happen is that we will lose our eligibility for money from MTC. So a lot of our road money subsidies and grants will evaporate. And long-term, we wouldn't be eligible for money from the state. Eventually you, if we can't figure out how to do it, then we wouldn't be able to get our housing element certified by HCD. And at that point, we'd become vulnerable to lawsuits from housing advocates.
Yeah. And, and all that sky is here, so he might.
Now he's started turning his camera on. He has something to say.
But there's even, if I understand correctly, there's even potential.
No, no, I really, it's, it's very short. It's just to say that's, that's correct. I mean, the real, the, the ultimate longer term penalty is as some communities have experienced that if they don't comply, then their housing element will not be certified. And all those cities can quote unquote self-certify, that leaves it vulnerable to a challenge. And what courts have done in cases in which they have determined that a city's housing element is not compliant is ranges from issuing orders to effectively taking control over the approval of residential development projects and, and rest, taking that away from cities. So the, the ultimate penalty for long-term non-compliance is fairly severe.
Though there's fair, a fair summary, although I would have put it in more colorful language, but that's fine.
If you're wearing your council member hat, you can do that.
Yeah, no, and I, I appreciate that. And I, I'd rather be temperate. Okay. Any, anything else from the council on this subject? You know, in terms of questions for, for the staff, I think we need to turn it over and see if there's any members of the public present who who want to chime in. I didn't hear that we had any before, but that may have changed.
Thank you. I'm looking for any hands raised in our audience or any emailed public comment. And I'll give it just one moment for any to come in, but at this time it looks like there is no public comment.
Okay. Okay. Well, then I think we'll bring it back to the council for any final thoughts and, and a decision on how to move forward.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, just, just one more related question. And this may be for Sky. Is there any type of appeal process if something is passed that we deem would not be safe? Is, is there some way we can say, hey, you know, and I know this is what the regulations say, but we can't comply with them. Is that possible?
The, the, the process that you're now engaged with is what constitutes effectively the administrative process for getting changes made to those issues. If there's a specific safety issue that can be brought forward, like there's still, there's still an opportunity to do that. This is sort of the initial response to the numbers that have come out. Ultimately, you know, if the final decision is one that the city believes would result in a safety issue, there is the opportunity, of course, to litigate that. Additionally, these numbers do have to be reflected in changes in the housing element. And as we have done, for example, with implementation of the ADU law, where we determine that there are some areas within the city that it would potentially be unsafe to add ADUs. There might be some room in the crafting of the housing element to address a substantiated safety issue. Ultimately, HCD is going to have to review that and decide whether or not they agree. If they don't, then there'd be a subsequent process for us to either work with them administratively or then litigate that issue. If they ultimately concluded not to certify on that basis.
I, i- is it important for us in making a record to put in this letter? I know Kalzman Paulson was talking about the, the fire safety issues for us to really highlight in this letter and start making a a, a legal trail, you know, that, hey, this is a real safety issue that we're, it wouldn't be safe for us to, to comply with this. And that's why we're, we're objecting at this point. Is it, does this letter kind of become part of that record?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. I, I, but I, you know, at this point, it's not one where we have significant evidence that, that, that's objective for us to be able to point to, but it's beginning to lay the groundwork for consideration of fire safety issues as part of the numbers. It seems to me like this would be an appropriate place to begin documenting that.
And, and I'm sorry, just one, one, one follow up in this, in your legal opinion, the way this letter is written, where it does mention the fire issues, but it mentions them a little bit peripherally in the last paragraph. Do you think that's sufficient for us to protect ourselves? So when it later, if we happen to make that argument, we even point back to this letter and say, see, we, we mentioned it, you know, way up in the beginning and, you know, it's been consistent. Or do you think, you know, this letter sufficiently does that?
I think so. I don't think there's a need to go into more detail at this point in time with, since it is just groundwork lane. Ultimately, if we're going to push on this, we're going to have to provide a lot more information about what the basis for our position is. And this is not the letter to do that. So I think what's there is adequate for, for the purposes of this letter.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Just on that last point, I, I, I agree with our city attorney that we've got a sufficient placeholder on the wildfire issue in the last paragraph. And I, I think that's good. I would recognizing that the, the second paragraph is something that is largely drawn from what our colleagues in other communities have put together and are submitting, and that's fine. My own preference would be to, to at least insert an adjective or two. You know, that really makes it clear that we believe that the baseline should include jobs and not just rely on the household growth baseline. Even though that is what we have to work with at, at this point. And then just one, one last question, since we're looking for placeholders in the last paragraph. You know, one of the things that I, I worry about a little bit is, you know, a lot of these planning exercises got started pre-COVID. And we're seeing, I think, a lot of transition in terms of housing priorities, transportation priorities, work priorities, where jobs are going to be located or not be located. I see that in my own family. And I'm wondering whether it might not be helpful if we're thinking about using this letter as a, as a placeholder for record making purposes to insert a sentence here about recognizing that some of those changes are ongoing and the whole process may need to consider that as it moves forward. Maybe that's a question for our city manager.
I, I appreciate the point you're making. I'm not sure. You know, at this point, I think you want to get on record saying the current methodology seems imbalanced. And I think be on record that we have concerns that are specific to Larkspur's natural environment. You know, and maybe leave it at that for this one. I think COVID and the implications long-term for planning is a whole new exercise A-BAG will need to take up.
Yeah. And that's what I, I mean, I, I agree with that completely. But it does seem that there are some priority that A-BAG needs to assign to that issue going forward. Cause it does affect fundamental assumptions that underlie this process. Things are going to be changing. They already are. So, you know, with that, I'm with those thoughts, unless others have additional thoughts about the language in the letter. I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve it and just maybe look at it a little bit and, and, and give discretion to the city manager to make whatever changes seem appropriate in a lot of the discussion we've had today.
I do want to know that since the mayor's not present, we'll only use the vice mayor's signature on the letter.
And I, I think I would make a motion to have the city manager edit this letter as he deems appropriate with the input from Vice Mayor Harof. I think my Vice Mayor Harof. I think my Vice Mayor Harof and City Manager have heard our opinions on this. And I feel comfortable that they will create a final letter that reflects that. And I find approving Vice Mayor Harof signing that on behalf of the council.
So I think, I think that's, I think that's, that's a motion, but just for clarification, I think it does envision. The city manager just taking one last look at the language in light of the conversation we've had this morning. So with 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 that, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, do we need a roll call vote?
Thank you, Councilmember Kandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Homer.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Yes.
And Mary Way is absent.
Okay. Good discussion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I ask a question of the city manager?
Of course.
Is the mayor is our A bag representative, is that correct?
The Vice Mayor.
No, I am, yes, yes.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Okay, any other comments on this matter? I think we've got a motion that's been approved and then we can move on to our fourth agenda item, which is to adjourn. So. I don't know if we need a motion to do that, but you, we, we now have one, so we could have a second. And I don't think we need a roll call on this one. Okay, well, thank you all for showing up and sorry that I had some technical challenges getting in on time, but I appreciate everyone's time today.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you.